This is what we call the review session. It is how we prepare for our formal business meeting, which is next Tuesday. It gives us a chance to review what's coming down on the agenda and to ask any questions and do any research and fill up any gaps that need to be further explained. So that is the purpose of the review session. So we have an agenda and we're going to go straight to the agenda. And the first one on the agenda is Dr. Elizabeth Lally, who I do not see here.
So she cannot be here tonight. She had a prior commitment, but I can talk a little bit to the course catalog. So one thing about the course catalog is it had not been reviewed or updated since Dr. Standing was here. It's been quite a while. So we took a lot of time to take out irrelevant courses, made sure that the rigor is up so that there aren't easy courses so much to take to fill schedule. We want students to be pushed, to make learning relevant. And Dr. Lally and her team took a lot of time in putting together the course catalog. So at the next meeting, I'm sure she can present it and give you more information about that.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions about the course catalog? All right. Moving right along. And thank you so very much for coming in for Dr. Lally. Right now, we're going to turn to the superintendent's update.
So I want to take a minute and just say, I know we're at the board meeting, but I want to wish Dunbar the best of luck tonight in basketball.
(applause)
We're playing a team from Columbus, and I'm sure they will be playing again on Saturday in the regional finals. So just wanted to say good luck to them. So transportation. We've an outstanding meeting with Bob Harmon, and we've talked to Bob throughout the year. We do more than we need to, simply put. We have to reduce the ridership because we have so many children that ride our buses. And what most people don't understand is that we don't simply transport Dayton Public School students. We're also responsible for all the charter schools and the parochial schools. And I want to acknowledge frustration, parents' frustration, children's frustration, our frustration, because this is a system that we did inherit. We do know that a two-tiered system will not work with the number of students that we have to transport. So we must move to a three-tiered system next year. We are updating the bell schedule. We're going to continue to do so. In conversations with Bob Harmon from ODE, we've also talked about the possibility of using RTA more for perhaps our seventh and eighth graders and even possibly including our high school students. So we may be able to offer more services in a better way. So currently, we transport at 1.5 miles. State law is two miles. We're going to take a look at that. There are so many other issues to consider. And when we get a chance to talk to the board in policy review session, and I know Mr. McManus and Mr. Lacy and Dr. Roundtree, thank you so much for being there today, we'll be able to go into that a little more. Mr. Harmon, did you want to add anything?
ODE is here. We have 610 districts throughout the state. Getting our students to or from school safe and sound is our utmost priority. And through the resources that we have and the knowledge that we have, we stand here to help any district, any school board with proper advising, different options, so that you too can be more efficient, but ultimately improve the safety and getting students from home to school, school to home, all the related activities, safe and sound.
So moving on. Longfellow. Do you want me to back it up?
Yes.
I just wanted to also extend one more time my appreciation for Director Harmon. I -- this is a tremendous need, and we're very lucky to have you here and to have the state represented and to walk alongside us. And so thank you for making the time to be here, and thank you for being alongside our transportation director, Michael Rosenberg. And we're going to do some great things. And we appreciate your expertise and all the knowledge that you shared with us upstairs. And I'm looking forward to a great year ahead. So thank you, sir. It's very much appreciated by this entire community. You're quite welcome.
Yeah, one of the other things that was mentioned was that, you know, we talked about bus driver shortage, and I think you said 67 or 68 percent?
Correct.
In the state of Ohio. So, you know, it's not just a Dayton epidemic. It's truly nationwide throughout the state of Ohio and throughout the nation. So that means that we have to revisit the way that we operate our business. We don't have that many drivers, so we have to reduce the number of route, reduce the number of riders, and move to a three-tiered system to do more with less. And our number-one goal is to provide stellar customer service, to make sure that children are picked up on time, that they're delivered home on time and safe.
Thank you. Let me turn to Board Member Baggarov.
Thank you, Director Roundtree. So my hope was that we can hear a little bit more on the transportation in terms of an update.
If I may. One of the things that came out was a possible draft, and if you would be still patient, let's allow them to...
Sure. Could we get Michael to come, please?
Just to give us time. He did give us some time. His role is to review what we produce. And so based on his comments today, we have our charges to what we need to produce. And so what we're going to do is produce a plan. And I think you'll like it. I certainly endorse it. And then allow the Ohio Department of Education to review it. And then, you know, we will be able to give you something more specific and concrete, if that's okay.
For instance, one of the things was, you know, with charters and parochials, when it's more than a 30-minute route, we don't have to provide service. So one thing that we're going to start doing, and it's not from their home, but it's from where they would go to their home school. And it's not based on a ride in a car. It's based on a ride in a bus, so that's stopping for tracks. If it's more than 30 minutes, we do not have to provide service, not just for one child, but for anybody that goes to that school from that area. So we're going to start timing those routes to see if we can make some changes and perhaps revisit policy as well.
We knew some of that from even our consultant, Mr. Jackson, last year.
Not the front two.
Not that part. That was new.
We knew about the 30 minutes.
He had talked about in lieu of payments. So this isn't for in lieu of payments. This would be they don't get service. And this is the first I've heard of it.
And just to add to that, those are the things that he kind of helped us really tone in on, like just have a better understanding. And another thing that the public might be interested in, if we haven't decided, that's why I don't want to say too much, but one of the ideas is that seventh and eighth graders would be given bus passes. If that happens, and it's not definite, but if we vote for that, then parochial and private schools and charter schools, they will not, their seventh and eighth graders will get bus passes as well. So that lifts the burden off of us, you know, with both age groups. So we've got to think it through very carefully.
But that was also a recommendation of Mr. Jackson last year.
Right. And then RTA went out straight.
Correct.
So, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, we have a lot of recommendations before us in the past year. It's time for action.
And that's what this plan was today. We have implemented a new action plan, and that's what we're saying. He helped us to understand the law. Just to briefly kind of describe it, we can, our analysis has to be different. We can do an analytical shift rather than just doing a district policy. We can divide the district into quadrants and then do different types of services based on a quadrant, which is much easier than basing on the entire district. So that's what we're trying, that's what I'm trying to say, that we're going to put it in writing so that it's much more...
Has to be a policy.
But it won't be implemented without board leader. And it will be something that, is that sufficient for right now?
That's fine.
Okay. Board Member Lacy?
Yeah, I mean, I understand Dr. Baggarov wanting to move on this because actually we need, we need to make a decision on bus purchases.
Yes.
And if on the agenda, well, for on the agenda for rule, there's an appropriation measure that would be viable for either the purchases. It would be good enough to either purchase outright certain buses or to finance a much larger amount. And if we're considering, I mean, we, these things need to happen, this needs to happen now in order to have buses to start next year.
And in the meeting, like we discussed, we want to take that right to policy. We're going to get some feedback on the policy.
But I mean, if... The policy committee you're referring to. Okay, if we're serious about going to the system that would reduce ridership, that to me would preclude the financing of a much larger amount of buses and possibly maybe just purchase...
Thirty.
The 30 for now. But that's, that's most of that meeting. That's what they talked about. And perhaps we can get you some more. I can, I mean, maybe we can get you some more detail in the next meeting.
We're going to take it to Mr. Harmon.
Okay.
Who is the Director of Transportation?
If I could, the...
Could you please wait for the microphone so that everybody can hear?
Never been accused of not being heard as my bus driver's voice, but if I could, one of the recommendations that I have not made to Dayton at this point because I simply presumed that that would be occurred as a prudent district, that you would be replacing your fleet, you don't need 30 new buses. You need 60. 30 is a very, very conservative amount. Your vehicles are getting older. The highway patrol inspections are getting more expensive and more imperative. Accidents are occurring. Buses are coming out of service. You have a very large fleet, and therefore, a 30-bus purchase, although it is a huge chunk of change, it is something that is very prudent for a school district, any school district in the state, is to keep their buses up to fleet maintenance and to safety standards. Vehicles have changed in the last five years. Indicators are the average cost of a new school bus. The 2017-2018 school year will be in excess of $100,000. The addition fact that these are custom-made vehicles, it takes six to eight months to get delivery. So that's not something, regardless of what plan this board decides to go with or what advice we make to the district, you cannot wait on an issue such as that because that actually rolls into the overall safety plan of going to the suggested three-tiered system.
Thank you. I want to let Mr. Harmon speak first. Okay, Mr. Harmon, would you give it to Mr. Rosenberg? I'm sorry. It's your turn, Mr. Berg.
I would agree. You know, I'm disappointed every time the state shows up to inspect our buses, we lose seven, eight, 10 of them in a moment's notice. And our fleet is about 13 and a half years, on average, 13 and a half years old. And the last numbers that I've seen, buses in Ohio last about 12 and a half years for 150,000 miles. We have 40 buses that are over 200,000 miles. The fleet is in dire need of new equipment. I can't put bandages on them anymore because, you know, the state is coming in and leaning on us and saying, "This is just not safe to drive in anymore." And my concern is, Bob mentioned it, you just don't go to a dealership and buy 30 buses and we drive off the dealership we got them next day. It doesn't happen that way. Takes time to have those buses built.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Baggarov?
Yeah, thank you for those comments, provides very much needed perspective. What really puzzles me is why are we still talking about 30 buses? It's been very clear since last year that we need 100 buses, and we can afford them when we finance them instead of trying to purchase them in full, using the very little funds that we have. So thank you for saying that we need at least 60 buses because, absolutely, but we really need more because our fleet has 200 buses. And waiting any longer, because this district hasn't invested anything in buses for the past seven years, the last buses we bought were just seven buses, 2010 model year, which means they were manufactured in 2009. It's really actually eight years old.
So we bought some...
We haven't bought regular buses. We bought only special-ed buses, so that doesn't count. We're talking about only the regular buses. And so that's why we urgently need a very large number of buses. And to do that, you can only do that through financing. So no matter how you cut it, no matter how you try to avoid it, that's what we've been trying to do since last year. And I don't know why this hasn't progressed at all. That's where my frustration is. We've heard all of these recommendations, pretty much all of them. 99% of these recommendations, we've heard since last year. We had a consultant. Nothing was done. We even had quotes from bus manufacturers since last year. Nothing was done. So I don't understand what is this procrastination? Why does it take forever? How long more can it take?
I have not seen a requisition for buses. There's been a lot of conversation, and I think one is the district, is make sure that we don't get ourselves in this position that we have to purchase so many buses or finance them that we, I mean, typically, some of the experts say seven years is when you get the most you can and a trade-in for a bus and then get another bus. So I don't know what's happened over the years. I can't speak for that. All I can do is move forward and talk to the treasurer to see what we can afford if the financing is a possibility.
Excuse me. She's going to be in a minute. What we can afford right now is 30 buses, but we can go to financing. But, Mr. Harmon, you're telling us 60 buses now. How do you want us to go after that? 60 buses another year or 30 buses?
Well, my recommendation would be that we make another purchase next year, significant purchase of buses, and then we get on a bus replacement schedule.
Excuse me, Mr. Rosenberg. Just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to get the bus. Go, Michael.
Okay. But I haven't all done yet.
I mean, I need to hear what he's saying. You can stand here.
Okay.
My recommendation is that we purchase as many as we can now and then make another large purchase next year. 30 buses is only about a sixth of our fleet. And I count ourselves lucky that we didn't have a harsh winter because we would have had 40 buses every day when it started. And I just strive that we cannot wait any longer. We need to make a purchase this year, if not a large purchase this year, a large purchase the beginning of next year, and then get on to a bus replacement schedule of maybe 15 a year until the fleet is replenished. So I recommend a, I recommend a bus replacement schedule.
Thank you. Candace is going to bring the microphone to Board Member Baggarov.
Thank you. And so the simple math would show that, well, number one, 30 is not viable, so that's already been discredited. Thank you for the experts to say that. And then when we say that we can afford 30, that doesn't include financing. That just means outright. That's 2.4 million dollars. So basically, we have 2.4 million dollars for buses. So we either buy 30 buses and continue having problems next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that at that pace, because that's what's going to be happening. Those 30 buses are dropping the bucket. Or we use that 2.4 million dollars to finance buses, which means we can afford to purchase at once 100 buses. And there you go. You've cut your problem in half. And then those 100 buses will age in seven years. So you don't have to worry about them because they have a warranty of bumper-to-bumper for seven years. That's what it means to have a replacement policy and a replacement program. Right now, our average buses are 13 years old, which means if you buy 30, or even if you buy 60 buses, it will take you another four years to replace the remainder of the old buses. So by then, they're going to be 17 years old, 18 years old. So that's a recipe for disaster. So if this district is serious about finally changing and resolving transportation, at least on a hardware level, it needs to actually invest and undo the policies of neglect of the former board, which haven't invested anything for mysterious reasons, haven't set aside any money into the buses, which doesn't make any sense to me. So we have to finally pull that trigger. We've been working on it since last year. This is dragging on for way too long. So, and please, let's consider, once again, let's do very simple calculations. Whenever we talk about anything, just do the math. Just very simple math. Take a napkin and write the numbers. Okay? It's very easy. So once you do that, you will see that some of these numbers that we hear keep on flying around and not realistic. Okay? So thank you.
Thank President Roundtree. And thank you, Board Member Baggarov, for your comments. One thing that was especially interesting to me was the discussion, you know, with Mr. Harmon regarding other districts who entered into large-scale purchases of new buses and new hardware. And taking a look at the data, even these districts who purchased very large portions of new buses, their efficiency percentage mainly only went up 5 or 6 percent. So the message there was, we could have 200 new buses tomorrow, but there's a very large part of the equation that also has to be considered, and that is the effectiveness and efficiency by which we transport children within the Dayton City School District, and especially looking at routes. So I think the path forward is, number one, we have to listen to the experts, too. But also, in addition to the hardware conversation, which is absolutely critical, we also have to look at the effectiveness and efficiency of our system. And those two parts have to come in play with each other. So we could have an old fleet and an effective way by which to transport children. We could have a new fleet and keep the same process that we're doing now. I think either direction you go, you would be falling short. So I think it really has to be a combination of both. We have to invest in new buses. We have to invest in more people. But we also have to take a look at the logistics by which we transport children within the Dayton City School District. And so the conversation today was a comprehensive look at all the solutions that might be available to us. And there are a lot of things that perhaps may not have been considered for some time. And at least for me, the revelation was, there are some short-term fixes, there are some long-term fixes. And some of these fixes don't necessarily take the same kind of intensive processes to implement that I thought they necessarily did. In other words, we can get moving really fast, and we can make an impact very quickly. But Board Member Baggarov, Mr. Harmon, and Mr. Rosenberg are absolutely right, and Superintendent, we've got to invest in new hardware. We have to look at systems. We have to look at equipment. And it's going to take a two-pronged approach. At least, that's the understanding I'm receiving from the experts. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Board Member McManus and Board Member Baggarov. I think you said it well, for both of you, that it's not a simple solution, but we have to take a two-pronged approach. We have to improve the hardware and do it quickly, as Dr. Baggarov has said, but we also have to look at our approach to transportation assignments. And that was kind of the focus of the crust today. And that's where the people part comes in. The hardware part is almost easy to resolve. We go on 60 or 100, and that's done. A requisition, and it's done. And it's going to happen because it has a full board commitment to making that part happen. But one without the other is incomplete. We have got to look at either a district-wide approach or a quadrant approach. In other words, it has to look at an approach that's going to increase efficiency because that's the crust of the problem. The hardware is the problem, but the inefficiency is also the problem. And when you look at them simultaneously, we will solve this problem. So thank you, Board members. And please be, both be assured that this is one of our highest priorities. So I'm going to turn it back over to our superintendent.
All right. Next on the agenda is Longfellow. I brought this up to the board about a month ago, and it was brought to my attention. So I'm going to turn it over, actually, to Dr. Burton. Longfellow is falling apart. It takes about $1 million to update Longfellow, and we did have someone go in and do a report. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burton to give some more information. My recommendation would be to move the students to the Jackson Center.
So we had, and I don't have the report with me, but I can provide that report to all the board members. We did contract with the company to come in to look at Longfellow and the challenges that are there. The estimate just to do the preliminary work is about 750-plus thousand dollars, but that's just the start. To really get Longfellow back to the condition that we needed to be in will be over a million dollars. And I'd like the board to really consider the population, the number of students that attend Longfellow. Remember, it's an alternative center, so that population fluctuates, could go anywhere from 30 to 75 students. Our recommendation is that we look at finding an alternative location for that program and then for the board to decide what they would like to do with that building because the building has a number of structural challenges. Right now, there are bricks falling off the wall. We had to put barriers up to ensure that nothing hits any students. There are a number of challenges. We are not using the entire building. And it is our recommendation from the operations department that the board look at a different location for the students in that building and then decide what we would like to do with Longfellow, but knowing that it's going to cost over a million dollars to have Longfellow meet the physical structural needs that we would like to have it have so that we can educate students in that building. And I will provide the draft of the report to the superintendent so that she can share it with the board.
All right. Moving on next, working with Randall, our internal auditor, and members of the board. The Council of Great City Schools will be coming in to do an organizational audit, and they will, they will receive all of the organizational charts. They will look at every department, make recommendations for districts our size. Perhaps we're a little too thin in some areas, and perhaps we're bloated in other areas. But we want their feedback. There will be extensive interviews, and this was something that was asked during the RIC process, perhaps to either justify why some positions are no longer needed or to justify why other positions are needed.
I'm a little concerned because there was conversation amongst board members that I ran that discussed the field that there needs to be, that this particular task needs to be put out so that there could be other companies or advisors to, to give us advice and an estimate cost and exactly what it is they do. And because there's also been some concern as to what, whether or not the Council of Great City Schools can provide for us what we need at the top efficiency level that we want.
Board Member Baggarov?
Thank you. She turned it on.
Sorry.
I actually needed it. Fine. Much better. So, yeah, we've been talking about since last year. It's true. And actually, I'd like to commend our internal auditor for work with our superintendent and work with our treasurer in looking at all kinds of possibilities, outreach into several consultancy groups, outreach also to OSBA. And then it looks like the Council of Great City Schools was able to give us a lower-cost estimate of how much is that, that's going to cost, which makes them not only very competitive, but taking into account that they're very well-versed in this and they specialize in this type of reviews and organizational audits, makes them more qualified than, for example, OSBA, as well as some of the other companies which specialize mostly in corporate restructure and corporate organizational charts and not so much in school districts. So that's what makes the Council of Great City Schools, at this point, with this revised, much lower cost estimate, a pretty good deal. So I personally am very happy about it. So that's my two cents. So, that's my two cents.
I want, one of the questions that I would want to ask them, and I would hope that they would be asked, is the idea of doing a secretarial pool that a lot of corporations are doing, that's cost-effective and efficient. And so, I'm just hoping that that is something that they are familiar with, and that they will take a look at that option, as opposed to just eliminating people, but also what kind of changes we can make to make everything work more efficiently and effectively.
And they will look at all areas. My former district had a secretarial pool, and it was much more efficient. It was based off of American Express models, in fact. Okay. So, moving on, the next point of interest is, I would like the Board to consider, as you know, we have a, and if you talk to principals and teachers, they have a great deal of immigrants, refugees, English-language learners. They come into our schools. They don't always know what to do with the children as they come in, and we would like to start a newcomers' academy. It can be part of another school. It could be a gardenale. That can be up for conversation, but I would like the Board to consider the option that we have, a newcomers' academy, where they're there for a year or two with immersion. Translators are there to help with the language content, and also the social-emotional skills. A lot of our kids are coming to us from, you know, war-torn countries, interrupted formal education, just so many different issues. Some are coming from outstanding backgrounds. It's just the language issue. And other children face trauma and other types of things. But we can provide more specific interventions and services for the children housed in one place of the school, or at their own school. When I started the newcomers' academy in Cleveland, we started with 118 children, and they were up to about 950. So, it grew immensely, and children are graduating. As a matter of fact, our school is outperforming many of the regular schools. Dr. Walker had an opportunity to go up and see the school. Principal Walter, that has a lot of refugees in her school, went up to see what the high school model looked like, and was very impressed. So, I would like the Board to consider that.
I certainly think that's an idea, that it's time has arrived in the city of Dayton with our immigrant-friendly philosophy here, from Mr. McManus and then Dr. Bagirav. I certainly think this is an ideal time to look at the Jackson Center model. If we're moving students to the Jackson Center, I have always been a proponent that don't just stuff students in a box, but make that a real attractive learning environment for the students, if we move them from Longfellow to Jackson. So, if, in fact, we do use the Jackson Center, in our planning, we could certainly think about, is that also an appropriate environment for the newcomers' academy, since we're going to be doing remodeling and providing purpose of social services, is that a place where all students can get those types of social services that are needed by students who are facing challenges? So, I think the Jackson Center has a great deal of potential, not only for our students and the alternative learning system, but also for students who are coming to our system as, you know, new immigrants. So, just something to think about. Mr. McManus is recognized first, and then Dr. Bagirav.
Thank you, President Browntry. And first, before I speak to that, I'd like to welcome Ms. Charlotte McGuire in the back, who's our new State Board of Education member who replaces H.J. Wagner. So, welcome, ma'am, and congratulations. And this is a really good idea. We had a really good conversation about this at the Accountability Panel with some of the business leaders. And one thing that was really interesting to see was the graduation rate at Belmont, which has taken quite a hit, because, as Superintendent rightly pointed out, Belmont is housing a lot of students who were coming from many different places. And what was interesting to see is, when you have students from a lot of different places embedding themselves inside of our kind of traditional population, if you will, those children really have to be given some intensive care. And so, when they're scattered throughout, it's slowing everybody down to a certain degree, and that's having a real impact on our graduation rate there. And so, I really like this idea of having the newcomers' academy, giving these kids some really intensive care, some really intensive focus, and catching them up to where they need to be. But that also allows the students who are English-language-first students to be able to keep on pace and to stay on track. But I think it's a great move. I think it's a win-win. So, well done. Thank you.
I also want to say that it's a great idea, that obviously is well-tested in different school districts. So, it's going to be good for DPS to implement something like that. My only gripe is with the name. I would hope that it would be called not a newcomers' academy, which somewhat stigmatizes the students and actually excludes them from that integration, and forever labels them as some kind of newcomers. Inter something much more jazzier as an international academy, or a global academy. That sounds so much more interesting, and it makes it so much more flexible as well. So, those are my only suggestions. Thank you.
Very well-taken, Dr. Bagirav. Very well-taken. So, Bagirav Academy it is?
Yeah.
All right. Taken into consideration. And I do understand, I put newcomers' academy just as a point of reference, but international academy would be appropriate as well. Okay. Moving on to Superintendent's recommendations. Human Resources, the DEA, this is after the July 10th. There is one resignation.
There's nothing we need to know about?
Can't discuss.
Can't discuss. I mean, that we would need to know about them, that we can discuss in executive session.
Ms. Berlach, is there anything outstanding?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Part B, Human Resources. These are separations of employment. Anything, Ms. Berlach, you want to add to that?
No. We do have our spring sports supplementals on there.
Yes. The Wright Brothers isn't on there. Is that, did we already do them, or is it coming?
It's probably coming. Hopefully, it's on there. I'll double-check on that, and if it is, then I'll make sure it's on there by tomorrow, so you can refer to it after we go.
And I notice boys tennis. Have we always had that?
We do when there is enough interest. And so, that is something that I know that we've had back in the '90s, and we've had in 2000, and so, certain schools does. If you look at Stivers, they have some additional sports that other, they have swimming, you know.
Right.
So, that is one. But we do have tennis sports at all over high schools, and if there's interest, I know that Mr. Baker would look at adding additional programs.
So, I mean, was there, did Mr. Baker push for this, or did it come from the high school?
I believe that they've always had tennis at Stivers. I'll have to double-check on that.
Okay. And, I mean, I think Mr. Baker is trying to expand. Is he?
Yes, he is. We've had some conversations. I know that he's had some conversations with Dr. Winston, but he is trying to expand sports programs to engage more students.
Because, again, one is like, another spring sport is lacrosse, and I don't know if there's been any attempt.
I'm not seeing that one.
Okay.
So, okay, so as we look at some of the positions, I know we can't discuss names.
Yeah. There's two positions that I question here, and so, I have some questions about them. I don't know if we need to go into executive session. There are two assistant coaches at Dunbar.
Okay. Thank you.
And there wasn't one change that will be corrected. If you look to number 13, the date should be 2016, not 2017. That is going to be corrected on number three.
Okay. All right. Moving on to C, Contract agreements. There are four present. Okay. Okay.
My question is on the previous item, on human resources. So, as being part of Finance Committee, so what has come to our attention is that, in this district, and like in so many other districts, we don't do something that companies do, something that most successful companies do, which is that, before hiring anybody, there is some kind of a significant or estimate of resources produced by the Treasurer's Office, which will make sure that we can actually afford it. So, this is a very crucial situation, because in the past, this district would just hire without any kind of consideration for the resources, for the very limited visceral resources. And this is something that needs to end, this stuff of practice, because all it does, it creates problems. Unfortunately, we, as a Board, have inherited a lot of problems. For example, no investment into busing for many years, or totally misspent cash reserves in the past for short-term gains, or haphazard hiring practices. So, finally, as we're getting through all this in the past years and getting this house in order, we need to make this one more step, where we have to make sure that we can actually afford every single position going forward. So, every new hire, I want to see if, whether the hiring is done by the Treasurer's Office or Superintendent's Office, whether there are consultations made with the Treasurer's Office, and specifically with the Treasurer, about can we even afford this going forward? Because it's very easy for them to make some calculations and to find out, you know, the salaries, the benefits expected, you know, over the contract term, whether it's one year, two years, or whatever it is. So, this is something that's very important. In fact, I would like to even suggest that we pass a resolution in that regard, that going forward, everything needs to be paid for. That will prevent us from having any type of problems in the future, and will save future Board members from the same pain and agonizing and troubles that this Board and this administration have to go through in the past several years. Thank you.
So, one thing I will say, and I'll pass the microphone to Treasurer Abrahah in a minute. We didn't, we did go through extensive meetings this past week, and every department had to turn in their budget and their allocation with what their salary was. Sometimes it was recommendations to hire, and we sat down, and some were approved and some were not approved. So, I'll let her speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah. We are preparing a budget. We are preparing a budget for fiscal year 2018. So, we are starting to calculate that one. But in the prior, we need to know, it's been happening. People are hired, and we don't, Treasurer's Office doesn't know. After the fact, we know.
Can you use the microphone, please?
We would like to know before people are offered or hired. That's all what we need.
Absolutely. And that's what I call for. So, we need to make sure that going forward, we fix that. That we fix this. And again, this is something that happens at every single district, so I don't think anybody or OSBA has a specific policy developed for that, which is fine, but it's very easy to fix. So, every company out there has something like that. So, I can take that upon myself, and Chairman Lacy here, on behalf of the Finance Committee, to draft that up and prepare that for even our next meeting next week.
That certainly was going to be my recommendation, and certainly if the Treasurer would not oppose that type of intervention, for lack of a better word.
I would love it.
Okay. So, just to be clear, the Finance Committee is going to draft a procedural recommendation?
A resolution.
Resolution that will be converted into a procedural recommendation, and it'll be reviewed by both the Treasurer and the Superintendent. Am I correct? Okay. Dr. Burton, I'm going to pass the microphone to you.
How does the personnel rep process that is supposed to be used to inform everyone whether or not it's the position has been approved by the Budget Director? So, that, how is that not helping to address this issue?
If everything is approved by the Budget Director, it is good, but some hiring are more than it's by the Director. So, that's a thing we are, we don't like, because it's getting us overbited. You know, some positions, we count one position on, and that position, if it is more than what we counted, let's say that person coming $50,000, but you're hiring $60,000 or $70,000, that's overbited. Or sometimes, it doesn't come to the Budget Director. The Budget Director gets it after it's signed. That's so problematic.
Does that answer your question? Okay. And do you?
So, thank you, Treasurer Abrahah. She explained, it's my understanding that there's a discrepancy into what is being offered and what has been, and the outcome. So, does Dr. Bagirav's suggestion address that issue?
Yes.
Does that address what your understanding of this, Dr. Burton? Okay. So, we just need to have a clear understanding on both sides of the equation. Thank you both.
Okay. If there's no further questions, we will move forward to D, Consulting Contracts, where there is one present. It's with a parent advisory council representative. Are there any questions? All right. If not, we'll move forward to E, the Development Agreement with the Dayton Metro Library. And that will be, that's executive content. Any further discussion?
I have some questions and concerns.
This doesn't address any, many of the concerns that I, well, first of all, when did this come on the agenda?
Today.
Today. Today. I would think that we would get more of an advance notice on things when we come to the review session, for people to at least be able to read it over. It doesn't address any of the concerns that I had at the last meeting with the Director of the Library, talking about the safety issues. He said that he would take care of that. There's nothing in here addressing that at all, that I see. Of course, I just had a quick minute to be able to look through it here. It also doesn't address anything about liabilities in terms of the baseball field, and any damage that may happen to any of the patrons at the library, or to the library due to any baseballs that happen to fly into their parking lot, because it's going to be located right at the edge of the baseball field. None of that is addressed, and he said at the last meeting that he would take care of that. He said to us that he would address all issues. Also, we had asked them if there were any other places that the library could be located, because it's my understanding that many of the people associate it with us in terms of employees here in the district, and also, a couple of Board members thought that this was the only alternative for any place in that neighborhood to build a library, and that is not true. The, I have been told by people on, and with the library, that know that they did have other options for places to build the library. That, the only reason they chose, wanted to make That, the only reason they chose, one of the major reasons they chose this was because they were under the understanding that DPS wanted partnership with the library. However, I'm speaking with the principal at Belmont and other employees there, yes?
And confirming with our attorney, I think that some of your conversation is only fit for executive session.
No, it's not.
You're talking about specifics.
Everything I'm talking about is public knowledge.
But you're talking about specifics, and it's more appropriate to discuss that in executive session.
The specifics are here in the contract.
Right, I mean, when you start off the name of people.
This is a public, this is public.
I understand that.
And so I'm going to continue. So I do think that we really need to take a real strong look at this and look at whether or not it's actually the best solution for where the library needs to be. There's also many people in the neighborhood who are not happy with the library going there. So it also breaks a contract that we have with the community in terms of when we built Belmont High School, agreements that were made with the community when Belmont was built where it's at. So we're breaking agreements, and we're also setting up a situation where it's unsafe for people to play baseball, to do their baseball, and creating actually hindrance for the staff of Belmont in terms of supervising the students and providing a safe environment for them.
Be prepared to go on to the ten. Okay, moving on to F, which is a draft for the school calendar for the 2017-18 school year. Are there any questions? Or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Rountree. Superintendent, do you foresee the school calendar change anymore?
No, I don't. This, we had a couple drafts, and this is the one that we selected to present to the board.
Okay, so.
But if there are recommendations, you know, let us know.
So as long as everything is okay, we can actually approve it next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, next, our treasurer's recommendations. Thank you, Superintendent.
Item A, I have purchase orders. If you have any questions on this. Item B, purchase requisition for Council of Great City Schools.
Mr. Lacy? Let me bring you the microphone if you don't mind.
I motion that we accept. You intend for item B to be accepted tonight, do you not?
It's a super approval.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I motion to accept the treasurer's recommendation to go ahead and hire Council of Great City Schools to do to do the organizational audit.
I second the motion.
And I would like to second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Dr. Baggert?
Yes.
Is there a discussion? I just want to make one brief observation that they did reduce the price for us, and that was a significant savings to the district. Are there other comments about it? Are you ready to vote? Dr. Baggert?
And just to piggyback on what Dr. Rountree said, it's a significant reduction. So we're very happy. It's better than what the competition would have been offering. So this is the best deal from the most well-known organization in the industry.
Thank you, Dr. Baggert. We are ready to vote. Dr. Baggert?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Lee isn't excused. Mr. McManus?
Yeah, yes.
Dr. Rountree?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Can you speak out into the microphone? Five yeses, thank you. Five yeses, the motion carries.
Item C is Zenin now. Do you have any questions?
Seeing now, we can move on.
Item D is amended certificate of estimated resources. This one goes with the item F. What we're doing in here is we're increasing the appropriation and the certificate of estimated resources to buy the buses. So we increased it by 2.6 million with this one.
Other questions or comments?
It's enough to buy, or it's enough to buy 30 or finance 100.
So for the matter of expediency, should we waive the 48-hour rule and actually adopt it today? As opposed to waiting until next week? Or does it make any difference?
We were thinking to put the purchase order next Tuesday, waive 48 hours, and we will start ordering.
Thank you.
Dr. Burton? Sure.
I guess I'm not clear. Is that financing 30 buses? Or is that financing 100 buses or purchasing 30 buses?
No, we will purchase 30 buses and finance 70. That will make it 100.
Can you do both? Can we do both?
I don't think you can do it. You can only finance 100.
What I was thinking is purchasing the 31, 30 buses for this amount and finance the 70. Or we can put it as a down payment and finance the whole.
You're not going to be able to finance it just like that.
Yeah, I was thinking for the purpose of time, we can buy it.
You get the ball rolling if you approve this appropriation for 30. We get the PR approved Tuesday. We can give them the order for 30 right away while we're working on trying to get the other 30, 60, or 70 that you deem necessary.
Microphone, please.
But if you want to finance it, it's not going to happen overnight. There's procedures. You actually have to present it to your finance committee. Finance committee has to review it. They have to present it to the board.
Okay, so finance, who's chair of the finance committee?
I mean, we can meet at any time.
Right.
But yeah, there are procedures. I mean, I, this, what, this will allow us to do something to get the ball rolling. So I, that's so I, if, if, if you would like, do we want to go ahead and do this now? I mean, has this been on board docs for more than 48 hours?
Yes.
The appropriations.
Appropriations.
The appropriation has. So that we don't really need to pass the 48, waive our 48-hour rule.
So, yeah, since we have a certain sum of money, unless we can use that as a down payment for 30 buses and then use the remainder for financing of the 70 buses, you can't just use that entire sum to purchase 30 buses because then you have zero left to finance the other 70 buses.
When you mean finance, we're not going to have it when you're financing your bar.
Microphone.
When you're financing a down payment, you split payments into five because it's financing for five years.
Okay, so.
We're not asking to borrow. That's why I'm actually confused by the, you're saying that you want the district to borrow the requisite sum to purchase the buses. Whereas, that's not what I mean by financing. Financing would be to use our existing money, but instead of purchasing outright 30 buses, we have more than enough to put as a down payment and finance for five years at least 100 buses. In reality, we have more. We can afford it depending on the price and configuration of the bus.
So we can wait, we can approve this one. The money is in our hands, and we can finance later on.
From what, and from what I understand about financing, that does not significantly lengthen the process at all. Because some of the bus manufacturers have already offered us their financing. So from their standpoint, it doesn't really require anything. And then maybe we can shop around, and that's something we discussed in the finance committee, and get an even better read from local banks, which if banks are watching, wink, wink. You should be doing that if you want our business in the future. So that's, that's what is meant by financing. So we're not borrowing any additional funds from anybody. We're just financing it by using our existing money, using that as a down payment. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Baggert, and Chairman Lacy too. So, but this is, this is a very, very important item that we're on right now. I mean, it is crucial to the conversation that we were having with transportation. So I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing. Treasurer, auditor, legal, superintendent, the board. We need to be very careful right now, make sure we know exactly what we're doing. I would also like to hear, let me say for the record, my opinion, if we can buy 30 or finance 100, I'd rather go with 100 because the need is clearly there. As long as we have a transportation expert from the state sitting with us and our director of transportation, gentlemen, anything you'd like to say? Any observations here? Any words of wisdom?
Within the school bus purchasing, keep in mind you're looking at a six-to-eight month delivery on these. Nobody has this sitting on the car lot. International Bluebird, Thomas, three major manufacturers. The longer you wait, the higher the cost of your buses. Average cost of a bus next year is about $103,000. Right now, as of this week, the average cost of a brand-new bus in the state of Ohio is $83,000 to $85,000. Basic stripped-down yellow and black, yellow bus, black racing stripes. If you amortize and stretch this out over a five-year vehicle replacement, providing you do some of the recommendations that we did, Part Two, improving the efficiency, improving the routing and so forth, you have potentially looking at 200 buses to replace. If you do a five-year program, that's 40 buses per year over a five-year period. You can negotiate with any one of those three dealers a 10-year warranty on the vehicle. That would put your oldest bus at the fifth year, still having five years left under warranty. You would have replaced your entire fleet over a five-year period. And by my numbers, that's about $3.4 million per year. That's a lot better than trying to pay the interest rates, no matter who your financial institute is. That beats anything any of the dealers will provide you without going to a bank, getting an investment, and rolling those funds over, over a five-year or 10-year period for financing it. There are districts that have known, a major district in the state of Ohio replaced all 144 of their buses using a 10-year replacement program. They did the bullet, they bought 20 buses per year, in your case. That's $1.7 million. There are a lot of dollars that then can be diverted into the education of the students that are on your buses while still maintaining a safe fleet, still covered with warranty and maintenance. Your oldest bus at a 10-year cycle, worst-case scenario, would be being on the schedule to be replaced with a new bus at 10 years. The state fleet average is 15-year-old buses. Our fleet average previously was eight years. Anything over a 10-year-old vehicle, you start to run into cost and maintenance where it is no longer a cost savings to maintain the bus or keep it on the road. Your bus's average fleet is a little bit older than 17 years of age. Your newest buses, I believe, if I'm not mistaken by our records, are about 2010s. Any given, at any given day, your fleet has 17 buses in the shop, been there, done that, seen that. Highway Patrol's been here, pulled the stickers off of it on a spot inspection. You can't run it. You need to have reliable hardware, match it with the logistics.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn.
Thank you.
I certainly would echo that. When I was collecting the information, all the, all the manufacturers sent in also information about financing, and we have that information. So it's my understanding that the rates are real, are real good because we're on the rate previous to the current rate increase by the feds. But also that we're using last year's pricing from the EPC to buy this purchase. So we're taking advantage of last year's prices, and we're taking advantage of some good interest rates, I think.
I'm probably going to echo what you're about to say, Board Member Bass. Thank you, Dr. Rountree. And thanks, Bob. It's good to see you again. I always really appreciate your, but something that I just want to remind the board members about, I'm going to echo what Mr. McManus said earlier about this being sort of a two-pronged approach as it relates to investment. When deciding how to spend, however you want to do it, remember that the hardware is not the only thing that we're investing in. I want to gently remind the board that we're in a negotiating year with our employees. And we want to make sure that we're attacking this issue from both sides, both, you know, from the hardware and from the infrastructure and efficiency and personnel. And I'm simply going to encourage you to consider the investment in both of those prongs and not just one. Thank you.
Thank you. There is actually a very important consideration that was revealed, and that's the massive increase in bus prices. The prices right now that we're getting are about $85,000, $86,000. That's fully loaded with every option and all the warranties. It's going to increase by $15,000. So if you want to wait and not buy 100 buses, you're going to pay twice, essentially. So shame on you. So the smart thing to do is to purchase 100 buses at least, and that's the minimum, at once this year before the price goes up next year. So that's the smartest thing to do. And then, of course, the whole aspect about the warranty that we've already talked about. If you only replace it by 30, or 40, or even 60 increments, that leaves a huge probability of the remaining 150-plus, whatever, buses breaking down anytime. And so good luck trying to drive around the city with 30, 40, 60 new buses because it only takes one broken bus to be on the national, not national, but local news and to have angry parents and others to come here. So from both financial perspective, from common sense perspective, and technology perspective, and workers' perspective, from the perspective of all mechanics, new buses means less maintenance, less expense from this district in both short run, medium run, and long run. And then one final, final concern so that everybody is fully understanding, because I don't think everybody does. Whether you finance 100 buses or you purchase 30 buses, you spend the same amount of dollars so that everybody finally understands that because I don't think everybody does. Okay, it's the same amount of dollars. It's the same exact amount of dollars. We're just going that 100th number. We didn't just come up with it. It's based on our budget, what we have set aside. So you can purchase 100 immediately by financing it over five years or whatever the term is. It could be seven years, it could be even 10 years if the bank allows that. Or you can purchase it in increments. If you do it in 30 buses increments, it will take you at least six increments, it will take you at least six years. And by the time you're done with it, you already have to start replacing your, your previous buses already that you purchased six years before that, essentially. So, because many districts here in Ohio, at least OSBA has said that, they recommend rotating them after seven years, just seven years, and not even wait for them to run out of their juice. So, if you, if you're gonna be doing it in thirty-bus increments or forty-bus increments, it means every year you will have to spend the same exact money as we would have to spend this year. So, let's say the figure, hypothetical figure that we have is two point five million dollars. Let's just say, set aside for buses. It means, no matter how you cut it, you either spend two point five to buy, to finance a hundred buses today, or you will spend that two point five this year to buy thirty buses, next year to buy thirty buses, year after that to buy thirty buses, and that's for six years. So, it's just very basic finance. Okay? So, just everybody needs to really understand this. Thank you.
Okay. I haven't, I haven't really heard, okay, the, the decision before the board is actually just an appropriation decision right now, but I guess the board is, is trying to give direction to the administration on, on the number of buses. And I haven't heard, and, okay, it's going the other way. This is a, this is a board member's recommending to administration on the number of buses. The only recommendation I've heard was from the gentleman from ODE to, to, to buy sixty buses. It's the minimum. The hundred-bus number, I'm not sure where that comes from, other than, it comes, just comes from you. Okay.
Mr. Rosenberg, would you like to say what you told?
Where's, so, if you...
What I said is, I'll take anything you offer me. We need a hundred. I'd love to have a hundred. I'll take fifty. I'll take thirty.
I'll repeat what he said. He said, he's saying, he, he's, he did say that he would need a hundred. Okay. And, and, but I'm also, I'm also hearing programs, or, or programs that, like, that would reduce for our ownership twenty percent in just a year. So, I personally would, would go with the, with the recommendation for the minimum that's needed of sixty buses. And if we, we just want to go around with what we recommend to the administration, that's fine. But, as far as procedurally, to get the ball rolling with an appropriation, can I, can I motion that we, the amended, did we already make the motion? No, we did not. The most, I, I was motion, I would motion, because it's already been, it's been, it's been on board docs for forty-eight hours. I would motion, it would be D and F. Is that correct? They go together. D and F.
Yes.
The amended certificate of estimated resources in the supplemental appropriation that would allow the board to spend the money.
So, you moved, made a motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
I will second.
So, now it's time for discussion. I'm ready to discuss regarding the motion. Before we go, Board Member Taylor?
And I'm, I'm not sure if this is appropriate now for me to say this, but I want to talk about the bus number. Is that, okay? Okay, it's my, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, that we probably should purchase more than a hundred if we were really gonna have a well-working fleet. And even, and it's also my understanding that even if changing the, the busing drastically as what was discussed earlier, I mean, I wasn't in the meeting, but these are facts that I've known for quite some time, that we will still need at least a hundred to possibly two hundred buses because we're short now in terms of well-working buses, and, and we're short of drivers. So, actually, it's my understanding that in changing the transportation system, that we probably would not cut the fleet like in half. Am I right with that, Sheila? And, and so I just kind of wanted to say, to say that we're still, we still absolutely would need the hundred buses. I, I don't know if that helps, Joe.
All right, Dr. Baguero.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Taylor.
Yeah, I, I think just the main aspect right now at, at this point, regarding the numbers, which is the most important from fiscal perspective, and that's what we are here really to do as a board. We are to be custodians of the taxpayers' resources, taxpayers' money, and to make the best deal for the taxpayers. And for taxpayers, what makes the most sense is at least a hundred buses. For parents also, that's, I don't think any parent would disagree with something like, but for taxpayers, that is the best deal. Why? Because the price is going up by fifteen thousand dollars next year. Okay? So, if we have a financing offer from the bank at only two percent, two percent amounts to about fifty thousand dollars in financing charges, you will pay far more in fifteen thousand-dollar increments for every bus next year. It will just take you how many, four, five buses to exceed that fifty thousand? And since you're planning on purchasing thirty, forty, whatever, sixty a year, you will click quickly exceed that. So, fiscally, it makes no sense whatsoever. It's actually extremely irresponsible to consider anything less than that. The price is going up significantly by fifteen thousand dollars. That's a huge increase. And by the way, I have no idea why because trucks, they use the very same transmission and the very same engine, at least in the case of International and in case of Freightliner, Thomas. They're not going up by that much. So, I don't know why they're jacking up the price for the buses, but that's a huge, huge problem for us. So, either you're buying now a hundred, or you're paying much more down the road. So, and I don't want to be part of something like that because that makes no sense whatsoever. We're not fixing the problem of the past, of this district, of this administration, of this board, which has neglected this for decades, apparently. We're, will basically just kick the can down the road by purchasing a very small number of buses and then pay twice next year by paying more. So, it makes no sense, no fiscal sense and no other sense. Thank you.
Thank you, President Roundtree. I wholeheartedly concur with Board Member Baguero and to staff. I think the, the board is making its intent very clear here. So, it appears that we are going to be, as Board Member Lacy said, approving this appropriations expenditure, you know, what you need to do your job, but the experts are here in this room. You have the budget at your disposal. You have all the tools. We need you to put something onto paper, in my opinion, and bring it to us because we can sit around this table right now and shoot from the hip all day long, but before we vote, in my opinion, we need to see the numbers, some responsible proposals to purchase buses in a responsible way based upon the feedback that you're getting now. Now, this is a good move, and I would like to see a hundred buses. That's what we need. I'd like to get more, but if we can only get a hundred, let's get a hundred. If we can afford it, let's buy it. Madam Treasurer, I need to know that we can afford it responsibly because I don't want six months down the road there to be something, and then we say, oh, well, we should have taken a little bit more time. I want to give, I want to have that assurance, and I would encourage the internal auditor, if, if that is within your purview, to take a look at that as well, and as well as counsel. But this is an investment that needs to happen. It needs to happen quickly, and I'm glad we're on this right now. So, you need to, you need to bring to the board what the board needs to make a responsible decision. We are making our intent known, and I mean it. So, next Tuesday, when we get together, we need to see something because we have the momentum right now. This is the right time. So, let's not get a week or two weeks down the road, as President Baguero alluded to earlier, we don't have anything in front of us, and we're saying, well, we, we asked you to make some progress, you know, a week or two weeks ago. We need this information, and we need to get movement on this, but we have to make sure it's done in a responsible manner. What truly can we afford, and how can we go about purchasing these buses? If it's through financing, it's through outright purchase, I'd rather have a hundred than I'd rather have thirty. All right? So, let's get this done. Good work to everybody. I'm proud of you, but we need what we need. So, let's get moving forward. Thank you.
We cannot afford to buy a hundred buses. It's the funds we have, but we can finance it. We can, so, for a hundred buses. If we agree on that one, it's good.
Thank you, Treasurer Aberha. I think you do have the consensus from the majority of the board members because I certainly endorse the one hundred-bus purchase option presented by Dr. Baguero. I think that it has been made, it's crystal clear that we're in need. This is not a superfluous purchase. It is, is not extravagant at all. It is about the safety of our children, and if we're in a position to purchase one hundred buses at this time, then I think that I support that position. So, we're gonna move on. Oh, purchase or finance? Purchase or, we want to acquire one hundred buses. And I'm gonna let the experts decide how they want to do that. Okay?
I just wanted to tell you, it's financing.
Financing is yes. We did not object to financing, and we would like, I just want to add to Board Member McManus' position, if I could. Rather than wait till Tuesday, I'd like to see it before Tuesday. I'd like to see, as Board Member Taylor often has said as well, just give us some time to look over the numbers because Dr. Baguero was making very clear. But I, I do know from making any kind of purchase, interest and taxes and all kind of other charges, delivery, who knows what else? So, I'd like to have something in writing prior to next Tuesday, if possible. I don't want to hold up the purchase, but we've all, we, we seem to have come to consensus. We need buses. Mr. Rosenberg has said, we need buses. So, we're gonna try our best to get you buses.
I agree.
You're welcome. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Oh, we, we have a motion and a move-in, second and discuss, and now we're ready to vote.
Dr. Baguera?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Lee is not here. Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Five yeses.
We have five yeses, and so the motion carries.
He's happy. Look, he's smiling.
We'll get you one bus.
Item E. Item E is repayment of advances. We borrowed general fund. We advanced from general fund to bond retirement. Now, since we collected enough taxes, we repay general fund. That's it?
Thank you, Treasurer Aberha. Before we move on, are there any comments or questions? Or you, you could certainly appreciate for me that we have repaid general fund. That's a good thing. So, thank you very much. So, have you concluded all your items? Okay, thank you so very much. And now we are ready for a very significant item, and that's adjournment.
Was a question about the personnel items?
Yeah, I have a question about two of the people.
Okay, I do recall that. Okay. So, let me then adjourn and then read the language.
Now, in, in accordance with Section one twenty-one point twenty-two G, do I have a motion that we go into executive session?
A board member can read it, or just, let me read it in, in the microphone so that it's properly recorded. I'm not acting as Hazel Roundtree. I'm acting as Dr. Walker today, so this is what he would do. So, I'd like to read executive session language. President, I'm just from Dr. Walker and on his behalf, pursuant to Section one twenty-one point twenty-two, Section G, number two of the Ohio Revised Code, I move that this board go into executive session in the executive conference room. This meeting is, is being held to consider the employment of public employees. We will return to this room. Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Baguera?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yeah.
Five yeses.
We have five yeses, and motion carries.
Dr. Winston and Ms. Burlock, are you guys in the exact session?
We have to, we, you have to say that we came out of executive.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have come out of executive session, and we are ready to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn.
This is moved and properly second. Any discussion? Can we vote, Treasurer Aberha? Please.
Dr. Baguera?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Five yeses.
We're officially adjourned.